Part of order. The Angels Camp City Council. If you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge. May the nations be with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
We'll call.
Mayor Fallendorf?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Herman?
Here.
Councilmember Bee Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Matildee?
Here.
Councilmember Olivera?
Here.
We have a quorum.
On 5/15/2008, we had a closed session after the regular meeting. And direction was given to staff regarding conference with legal counsel and anticipated litigation. Just now, we came out of closed session and same thing, direction was given to staff. Approval of the agenda. Is there anything that the council wished to amend on the agenda?
The regular agenda?
Yeah. Public comment? Nope. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Shall we?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Excuse me, Amanda. I didn't hear who made the motion.
Joe.
Joe.
Joe, and then second with Linda. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matters not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Matters raised by the public will automatically be referred to staff or placed on the next meeting agenda. Is there any public comment?
My name is Ron Rivera. I live at 556 Smith Flat Road, Angels Camp. I'm chairman of the museum commission. I'm here because the city council meetings are covered by local TV and other media. And I want to get the word about the volunteer opportunities at the museum. The commission, museum commission, is currently one member short. We're supposed to have seven. We currently have six. At the end of this year, we will be losing another one of our members. So we are in need of commissioners. We're hoping that somebody watching this meet, this meeting on TV or the pine tree may come forward. Some of the duties of the commissioner are to coordinate all museum activities in partnership with the museum director to encourage a sound program of museum acquisition, to prepare a master plan setting forth a comprehensive, long-term plan for the museum development. Museum commissioners serve three-year terms. There are supposed to be seven members on the commission, and we meet monthly. Members do not have to live within Angels Camp city limits, but they do have to be appointed by the city council. In addition to the muse, in addition, at the museum, we are always in need of volunteers to act as docents or to help in any number of projects around the museum. Anyone who is interested can call the museum directly at 209-736-2963 to get further information on this. Anybody that's in the audience or any of the council members that know of anybody that may be interested in these positions, I'd like any help we can get on this. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Moving on, number six, consent agenda. We have in front of us multiple items. The following consent agenda items are expected to be retained. They will be acted upon the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff, or interested person may request that any consent items be removed for discussion. Is there any council member that wishes to pull?
I'd like to pull item G.
G.
Okay. Are there any other requests? Is there any public comment? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve A through F?
Shall we move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to pull item G, which is the approval of reappointment of Commissioner John Broder to a full three-year term on the planning commission commencing July 1st and extending through July 30th of 2021. I just wanted to pull that because I wanted to personally thank John for your continued efforts, and it couldn't happen to a better guy.
John? We won't be able to hear you.
I thank you for the compliment, and I was going to wear the T-shirt that I was, I bought or was given when they opened the bypass because it was in that month that I was appointed first to the planning commission. So nine years ago. Anyway, this is a technicality, and when you get reappointed for any period of time, it has to be three years. That's, that's the thing. I, my term is up at the end of this month, and I had said that I was not going to re-up, but I will stay on until they find a replacement. So don't be disappointed, or don't jump up and down with joy when I disappear in a month or two.
Thank you for your continuing service. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
I'll move item G.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, before we get into a regular agenda, due to the accoust, I'm going to ask everyone to do their best to not have out roar, please. It's really difficult for the council members to hear with the mic and in its depths. So please be respectful while somebody's at the podium so we can hear what they're saying. Okay? So moving on, regular agenda item A, consideration of adopting resolution number 1825 approving the preliminary engineer's report declaring its intention to continue assessment for fiscal year 1819 for the landscape and lighting district, Greenhorn Creek, and notice to a public hearing for July 17th, 2018. Mr. Myers.
Thank you. So tonight's item is a second step in setting an assessment for the Greenhorn Creek LLD.
Flip the mic, D.
You can hear it? It works? Okay, the first step was to direct the preparation of the engineer's report. The engineer's report has been prepared and has been included in the council package, your package tonight. The report recommends keeping the assessment at $300 per single family equivalent. So the next step is a time period for public review before the assessment can be formally adopted. And a copy of the report can be found at the city hall, which is open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. So very short and simply, it's recommended to adopt the resolution approving the preliminary engineer's report, continue the existing assessment until new one is set, and set July 17th for a public hearing date. So are there any questions?
Any council comment?
None here.
Any public comment?
My name is Jack Lynch, 600 Selkirk Ranch Road in Angels Camp. I have a question on page nine of the SCI report. Where it describes at the bottom, the 2018-2019 maintenance plan. And, and the third dot down has to do with pond maintenance contract. And it reads, "The ponds require several types of maintenance per, per year. Majority of the maintenance is maintaining the required outflow into Greenhorn Creek. However, there is a method to control aquatic plants by raising and lowering the water level." And then it's, the last sentence is the thing I like to ask about. "It is hoped that a contract with the golf course operators for the pond operation can be reached." And, and I have a question. Wouldn't it be desirable to have this really in place? Because if, remember, the, it was over a third of a million dollars, over $300,000 spent on, on the pond and lake area. And it would seem to me very desirable that this be nailed down as soon as possible in a strong way so that you don't have to be doing that on a periodic basis. And finally, on page 11, there's an increase of $10,000 under the budget for landscape water. It's going from $18,000 to $28,000. I have just a question. Could you explain the reason for that amount of an increase on landscape water? Thank you.
Okay. The first one was on the pond maintenance, and I am in discussions with the golf course operators over that already. The second one was on the water usage. Those are based on actual usages?
Back up and repeat what you said about the pond.
Pond maintenance? Yes, I'm already in discussions with the golf course operators on the, on the pond maintenance. We're in a little bit of a dilemma because they actually control the water that goes into the pond, and, and so this, they're, they're more of a natural for, for the actual maintenance of the ponds than we are. So we're already in discussions about that. And the water usage is based on actual usage. The, the increase is due, that's the amount of water that the landscaping is taking.
Is there, is there a means to, to link that irrigation to Title 22 water?
It's possible.
Reasonable means?
It's possible, but right now, under the state's rules, that if we wanted to, let's say, use it on the median, we could. We wouldn't still, part of, one of the work items in here was to start assessing the median to see if we can go to dry landscaping or some other landscaping on lawns. Because even under the state rules now, we can't use lawns and grass medians and, and on roadways, even if we use Title 22. So there's really not an advantage to that. Actually, you need to look at the whole picture, the whole landscaping, the water usage. And it's been 20 years that, that this landscaping's been looked at. So it needs a good overhaul.
Do you have a question? To follow up on Jack's first question, we have wetlands maintenance in here. It's, it's up by $3,000 this year. From 15,000 to 18,000. Why the comment, "It is hoped that we come to a contract"? What happens if we don't come into a contract? Or what is to be gained by coming into a contract vis-à-vis the, the budget?
The way the, the golf course operates, they use our Title 22 from the wastewater treatment plant. And in order to use the creek water to fill the large pond, which flows into the small pond, which flows into Greenhorn Creek, they got to clean out their system. No Title 22 can go down the creek. So it's really the golf course operators that are controlling the water going into the ponds. We're on the hook to make sure three gallons per minute goes into the creek. But we asked, have to ask permission for them to go ahead and, and put the water in. So it makes sense to me to get a contract where we can start enforcing some rules and regulations.
Okay, so that's what we call pond operation. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And that's more of an aggressive work plan than I think I've seen in the last couple of years. So hopefully, we'll get a lot of this done.
Okay, thank you.
On the water bill, Dave, the landscape maintenance, no rate change year over year, correct?
No, not over this, this year.
So what's, why is such a drastic prediction with respect to consumption?
A lot of that was, was predicted that we, well, it all depends a lot on the, on the type of year we have. When we have very wet years, you don't irrigate as much. And when you do have dry years, you irrigate more. We had some pretty good heat last year. And also, we were anticipating using a little Title 22 out there. But we would have to install the infrastructure and do the permitting to do that. And that just was going to be several years out. And also, with the new changes in the state, it's not going to be very profitable to even do that. So it's something we'll take a look at. But there was a little bit of a discount on the budget going in last year, and a little bit of actuals that made the change.
So the folks we hired to do the analysis on the water rate, I mean, the water consumption, they looked at more than one year?
Well, they looked at the last year, basically, to.
Did we spend 18 last year? Or was that the budget? Did we overrun it, underrun it? Do we know?
18 was based off actuals.
On actual?
Yeah, on actuals, yeah. And it was just previous year, probably about three years ago, we had a water leak out there, and we had to discover that. That caused a large increase in rates, too. It's, it's possible.
I'm, I'm still confused, Dave. If, if, last year, the 18,000, it was a dry year, the hot year. Last year, the 18,000 is actual and not budget, correct?
Right. Well, we used last year's actual to determine the budget for this year.
So last year, we spent more than the budgeted amount?
Mm-hmm.
Well, how much did we spend last year? Do you know?
I'm assuming it's 18,000. I don't have that number in front of me.
Was this not last year's budget in here? Or is this last year's actual? What are we looking at here?
So, so last, excuse me. Last year, we, I was incorrect on all these things. I was thinking last year, our budget was 15,000, etc. Got convoluted here. Last year, we budgeted $18,000. This year, we're going to budget 28,000.
Right. So the question, obviously, last year's a dry year. Why are we going up $10,000?
Well, last year, the budget was projecting what we would spend in the water, and what we actually spent was closer to 28,000.
Thank you.
So they're trying to include that into the, this year's budget.
Okay, so we had an overrun last year. And we're, okay.
Yeah, I apologize. I confused the heck out of you guys.
Any other question from the council? Public comment? Is there a motion to adopt resolution 1825?
Shall we?
I just stuck it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that?
All right, thank you, guys.
Item number B, adoption of resolution 1826, the resolution resubmitting ballot measure to impose the 1 half percent, .5 transaction, uh, tiered transactions and use tax in response to comments from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and increasing the appropriation limit for the city for fiscal years 19 to 23. I'm going to turn it over to Doug.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is an item that you frankly have already passed, was the subject of an audit by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, which decided through their audit that they would like a new code section created, and they would like some specific language that would give them broader authority to be able to administer the proposed tax. There's nothing substantively that's changed since you've seen last time, other than to just kind of update it with some language that the state, the California State Department wanted. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you'd have.
Any council comment? Any public comment?
Jack Lynch, 600 Selkirk Ranch Road. I have a question. What percent of the voters' vote is needed in order to actually pass the increase? I noticed that two-thirds of the council is needed, but what is the percent to approve the tax increase by the voters? Another question I have is, you're going to be voting on a half percent transmission, transaction and use tax. It's, it's different than a sales tax. Has the council or the city administrator gotten any sense of the, the willingness of the citizens to go forward with the half percent sales tax increase? Historically, back quite a few years ago, when I was active on the council, the council and the administrator use an outside group to do telephone surveys to get a sense of the willingness of the community to go forward on taxes. And I just wondered whether you have any sense of that. Thank you.
So to answer your, your question, this would, this tax would require 50% plus one in order to pass. It's not a two-third vote. It's just to place something on the ballot. At the city council level, it requires two-thirds of the city council to place it on the ballot. In terms of.
There's no difference between sales tax and the.
And use tax?
Feedback, yeah.
So certain things like medical are exempt from sales tax, but would not be exempt from a use tax. So there's some specific differences in, in that. But if I was to oversimplify, they essentially accomplish a very similar goal, just that there's more things that are exempted on, on sales tax. And then with regard to the poll?
No polling has been completed.
Yeah. The thought process in that is the poll would probably exceed the cost of putting the item on the ballot and letting the voters kind of decide. So probably the best way of figuring out how people feel about it is to not poll it, but just to put it on the ballot, let people have their opinions be known. I do think the council would not have supported putting this on the ballot, knowing the community's feelings, unless there was a sense that it was absolutely essential in order to be able to provide even the, the existing levels of service that the, the city is currently experiencing because of kind of the lack of growth at the, at the tax base. So. Trying not to echo. So there was a, from the, I think I can feel comfortable saying that the reason that it was put on the ballot and a poll wasn't done is because it would be more expensive, or at least the same amount of money, to do the polling as it would be just to put something on the ballot. So the best poll is letting people have their opportunity to have their opinions heard. But it was only put on because from the city's perspective, it was absolutely necessary in order to have any chance of maintaining even the existing levels of, of service. Without the tax passing, I think it's fair to say that the city would continue to see a diminishing level of service in terms of what can be offered from a governmental standpoint.
Any other public comment? Any council comment?
No. So Doug, I was just, I'm going to ask, so we're not, we're just adding a section, is that it? Rather than replacing anything? So sort of what we're doing from what we voted before? Oh, did you find something else there?
No, no, it's, it's, we are just rearranging things.
Okay.
I think that's the best way of saying it. So it will be referenced differently, and will, we put in some specific language as it relates to the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration to administer the program. But I, I would say that they are very minor and non-substantive. It's really just moving things around and adding some clarifications for their purposes.
Any other comment?
Well, this is the resolution.
Any other public comment? Is there a motion?
I move to.
Is there a? Is there a second?
Second. Is that the resolution 1836, is that it?
26.
1826.
Oh, 26, I'm sorry, I took off my ground.
All in favor?
Aye.
Joe, and then Linda. Okay. Item C, public hearing, adoption of ordinance number 43, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Angels Camp, adding chapter 5.10 cannabis business regulation to Title 5, and repealing chapter 8.25 medical cannabis regulation from Title 8 of the Angels Camp Municipal Code, repealing the ordinance number 480, an urgency ordinance concerning the cultivation, commercial, and retail sale, distribution, and delivery of marijuana and related land uses related to cannabis business regulations. And again, due to the accoust, could you please be respectful when you're coming up to the podium? The echo is really bad, and it makes it very difficult for us up here to hear what you're saying. And at this time, I will turn it over to Doug. And open the.
So Mayor and Council, let me start by apologizing both to you and to the community. I think at a previous meeting, which I was supposed to be at here, but was required to go to one of my other cities at the last minute to deal with an issue. I think that that created some confusion because that item was delayed and dealt with something that's related but, but peripheral to this. Let me state that all of staff's recommendations have been and will continue to be something that strengthens local control and tries to preserve as much control for the city as we possibly can as it relates to the state. And what you have before you here is an item that was, that we have to revisit this year because previously, the action taken by the city council was just to introduce an urgency ordinance, which means it by definition has an expiration date and can only be in place for a very, very short period of time. And so we then have to revisit these, these issues and have to make decisions on them. What you have, what, what is before you tonight essentially would cement what was in the urgency ordinances with some very small changes, which is to say that, at least as it relates to the cell within the city of Angels Camp, recreational cannabis would not be allowed. And as it relates to medical cannabis, it would only be allowed through one of two different alternatives that are proposed today. Option one would be what's currently on your books and which has never been used, even though we know cannabis is currently being delivered to the city, is to, to require that those folks to go to the, meet with the police department and go through a particular process. The second option just allows the city administrator to recognize other cities, such as Sonora, which have chose to allow cannabis, and to allow those operators who have gone through a background check to be able to deliver medical cannabis within the city of, of Angels Camp. So it would be limited to medical, and it would be limited to delivery only, which is what your current rules and your current law and your current urgency ordinance states is allowed.
Doug, are you saying delivery, then?
Delivery. We're only talking about delivery, because everything else would not be allowed. Nothing that we do here tonight, or I should say, everything that we're doing tonight could be undone at the state level. As some of you may know, there's a Senate bill called SB 1302. I'm told it's dead, but these things have a way of resurrecting themselves at the last minute, which would allow the state to create a statewide license by which delivery services could deliver recreational and medical cannabis within any community irrespective of the local rules. In addition to that, there is no way to keep cannabis out of Angels Camp. Irrespective of how Angels Camp voted. Irrespective of how Angels Camp voted, both recreational and medical cannabis are allowed within the community because we're still part of California and that's the rule that the State of California do. What we can control is how much people can grow personally and whether or not you're going to allow those transactions to occur within the city. We can't prevent somebody from going to a neighboring community or someplace far away, obtaining cannabis and bringing it back to their home or to the community. And so that's what makes this such a difficult issue in the sense of you're trying to decide what you want to allow to be sold within your community, but you can't control what's essentially allowed to be consumed within your community. With that, I think that we have lots of safeguards that are built in. And I think it goes a long way in terms of representing the previous action of the council. And so just to kind of conclude, again, under all of our proposals that are represented tonight, cannabis businesses, manufacturing, testing, cultivation, dispensaries would not be allowed. Recreational marijuana delivery would not be allowed. But what would still be allowed is medical delivery and then we're talking about what method is best. Method one is the one that's on the books that has not been utilized, even though we know people are delivering in the community. Option number two would be just basically having the work be done by other communities with the idea that once we get folks invested and knowing that they have a market that they could service, that they would be more inclined to tell us when people are doing things that they shouldn't do. And so we'll get some self-policing to give us the information that we need to be able to drive out people who are essentially acting, I know it sounds kind of odd, but illegally within the state legal system. You know, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But again, I want to apologize to the community in the sense that if we created any confusion at the last meeting because of my lack of ability to be present here, we thought it was important as your new city attorney that I be personally here. I represent nearly 10 different cities and a host of other special districts. I have, represent jurisdictions that have decided to both allow it and jurisdictions who have decided not to allow it. And so it's really a question for you as to, you know, where you want to go. And so I wanted to be here to be able to personally explain those experiences. So again, if there was any confusion, if there was any anxiety, if there was any consternation about that meeting, which I couldn't show up and about us pulling that agenda item, it was not because we had any desire to hide anything from the public or to create any kind of deception. It was just so that I could be here personally to answer the questions that you have and kind of tell you about our experience. So with that, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. But this again just represents essentially what is on the books with us deciding how you want to handle delivery going forward.
Do you guys want to start with question? Do you want to start with public comment?
Public comment.
I have a real quick comment.
Okay.
And that's kind of to dovetail into what Doug said. In my opinion, every action that we've taken regarding cannabis has been to protect the city from the state. We can't always, the state has a ton of unfunded mandates. The state tells us all the time what we can and can't do, and this is no different. But we have ways to protect ourselves. It's loud and clear, the citizens of Angels Camp don't want marijuana in a large scale, in any scale in the city. And so everything we've done, every step we continue to take is to protect the city from the state, is to keep local control of this issue in our hands. So with that.
And I had one thing just to say too. Just to make sure everyone understands, there's two versions, right? Version one and version two of delivery.
Linda, can you get closer to your microphone?
Sure. I know we're all worried about the echo. Okay. So I know that there's version one and version two. So what we're deciding is not all of the other things which are banned. I mean, we're deciding that, but those are already kind of like a given and what we're having to do here is choose also which version. And I think maybe after the public speaks, I just want to know the public makes sure they knew that there is just a delivery decision that has to be made. And maybe afterwards you could explain the two versions after everyone speaks.
Maybe better to do that prior to public comment.
What are you thinking?
Maybe explain the two versions prior to public comment so they can have an opinion.
Okay, so I was wondering too. So thank you.
So let me start by saying that nothing that we have before you tonight contemplates anything but a ban on everything but medical, delivery of medical marijuana. That's the, so if you are not going to, if you wanted to go in a different direction, the city council would have to direct us to come back with new versions. So we would not be able to do that tonight. So that's all that's on, that's all that's on the books for tonight. Version, so to talk, so that the public understands the differences in the version. Version one, which represents what's currently on the books, I'm just going to read, and it's on page two of this, I think, but I'm going to read to you so that everybody's on the same page, the process that somebody would have to go through in order to do that. So persons delivering, we'll just say that we'll call this one, persons delivering cannabis in the city may not possess cannabis goods valued in excess of $10,000 at any time pursuant, while making deliveries within the city. And the business must be in good standing to remain on the list of approved cannabis delivery businesses. So they have to get approved. Process of being, those deliveries can only occur between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And prior to any delivery with the city, they've got to register with the police department and provide proof that they are licensed under state law and permitted by local jurisdiction to operate, including the driver's license number of the employee conducting deliveries. And then the police department will verify that the employees of the cannabis dispensary do not have a criminal history, which will be disclosed by the Interstate Identification Index. In addition to that, before July 1st of each calendar year, an allowed cannabis delivery business shall provide the Angels Camp Police Department with proof that the cannabis dispensary is licensed under state law and permitted by local jurisdiction to operate. It's more, it's more the same. The police department, the number of, let's see, additionally, the cannabis delivery shall also report any cannabis, any thefts related to cannabis delivery that occurred in the prior year. And payment of all cannabis and cannabis products shall be made by means that do not involve the exchange of cash. So that's essentially what's currently on the books. We cleaned it up a little bit, but that's essentially what is on, is on the books. What we've, what we proposed as an alternative to what currently exists, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe anybody has ever registered with the, with the city. But I can tell you, when I was going through the interview process with the City of Sonora, we had at least one applicant come in and tell us that they were delivering to Angels Camp, which then I abruptly told them that that was a big no-no and that I was going to have to tell the chief. Won't go into public about who that was, but, so we know that there's deliveries happening here. In their defense, I actually, by the look in their eyes, I think that they really didn't know that they couldn't do that, but that's neither here nor there. Version two cannabis delivery registry. So this would be the alternate from what currently is on the books. Any approved cannabis delivery business must obtain and maintain a state cannabis license and an authorization from a local jurisdiction in California to operate. So you have to be approved by another city and you have to have your state license. The cannabis delivery must pay the city's business license tax. In other words, you've got to get a business license and obtain the city's business license certificate prior to conducting any deliveries in the city. Before July 1st of each calendar year, an allowed cannabis delivery shall provide the Angels Camp Police Department with proof that the cannabis dispensary is licensed under the law and permitted by the jurisdiction. So under this one, you get put on a list by the city administrator. So for instance, and I know you pick on Sonora because I'm city attorney there and I'm familiar with it and it's probably one of the closer ones that plans on allowing it. You could go and the city administrator would have the prerogative of saying, if you've met the standards of Sonora, then we're going to allow you to deliver medical cannabis within the City of Angels Camp. But you would still have to go through that process of having a business license and providing the police department with your information.
Doug, what is, go ahead.
So I just wanted to be clear though. The recommendation is that they still have to provide all the necessary information and background information to the police department.
Yeah, nothing of what you provide the police department changes. What essentially changes is we're allowing, we're not going to be approving you, we're going to allow another jurisdiction to kind of vet you. Because what we don't want, and the reason that I came up with this proposal, and this was why, this would probably be my recommendation, is we want to make sure that we don't just have anybody, we don't want somebody delivering from Los Angeles into Angels Camp. We want to be dealing with people who we're familiar with, who we know, who we know have gone through at least an extensive background process, who come from communities that have similar cultures and ethos and values. So we want to know who we're dealing with, in other words, and not just have them come up to the police department and say, hey, I don't have a criminal record, I'm licensed in LA, I'd like to deliver in Angels Camp. So that's the reason to have this kind of process. The other reason is because nobody's used option one, even though we know cannabis deliveries are occurring in Angels Camp. And so the thought process is if we have people who are authorized to do business in Angels Camp, they're more likely to tell us who the bad actors are so that the police department then has the information that they need to be able to stop those bad actors from coming into the community. When I say bad actors, I mean it in the context of people who are doing business that aren't authorized to do business. So if we have a prohibition in place, then, then, then you need people to abide by that prohibition. That's what I mean by bad actors, just following, just following the rules. So, does that satisfy?
I was going to ask some more questions, but some of the other council members should have an opportunity and if they, you know, then I'll ask my other questions.
Just a concern about the non-cash component to this. Do you might understand that that's prohibited in this exchange?
So we didn't include, that's an, that's an option number one. You could certainly require it to be included as part of option number two. I think that the banking industry hasn't evolved enough to, as it relates to this. I think that there's going to be a solution very soon. It appears that the state's going to do a very limited charter, or there's going to be a separate bank charter. They're going to create special banks for cannabis businesses at the state level and they're going to be allowed to do business throughout there. But that, and that should be in effect by the beginning of next year. So the state's basically going to be the one who's going to act as, create a way in which these special banks can operate. But we're not there yet. And so my concern is if we limit it to saying that you can't have any cash rather than maybe just creating a limit on how much cash you can have, is it, we may continue to have people just operate outside the rules. And if we're going to have these rules, I want to encourage people to operate within them because they don't really, there isn't a really great banking solution yet.
But if we do it where they can use cash, how are we going to know how much is being, how much transactions, yeah? Dollar amounts.
So it's one of the reasons that I'm recommending version two. So on the second version, one of the things that happens is, at least in the jurisdictions that we would be looking at, potentially approving, is they have a random audit system and they also have a system by which both the delivery services and the product are accounted for, kind of a seed to sell type system. And so the likelihood of somebody underreporting is less high with somebody who has to undergo that type of rigorous thing. I should also say that the value of these licenses is so high right now, as long as you're working with people who have local licenses and state licenses, it's very unlikely that they're going to try to, you wouldn't spend the money that they spend to get approved and then throw it all out the window for a couple of, you know, a couple of transactions. So.
And also, do we, for instance, you said Sonora is allowing sales and has delivery services. Do we know what their vetting criteria is compared to what we had or have in place currently?
I know what Sonora's vetting process is. It's fairly significant in terms of background checks. It's the equivalent of what, the same type of background check that a police officer goes through, at least for the people who are, can you hear me all right? So the, the people who would be operating the businesses, and we're just talking about Sonora as an example, the background that they go through is about a $2,000 to $3,000 background check per person. And it's extensive as what you, a police officer goes through. That way we can pick up if there has been any kind of criminal activity or financial activity that we want to be aware of out of state as opposed to just the DOJ list, which is what most folks go through. For folks who work there, there's a lower level of background that's required and there's also random audits both on the financial side as well as on the public safety side. So both fire inspections, police inspections, and making sure that all the rules are being adhered to. So I can talk to Sonora. I don't know that we've had the opportunity to really utilize our system because we haven't had anybody come in and seek to utilize it. So I don't know that our system is as well-developed. I think we would probably, I think the chief has a good idea of what he would be looking at and going through, but we haven't had the opportunity to do that.
So you're saying once a dispensary is licensed, once the dispensary is licensed, like Sonora, they have the responsibility more than we have the responsibility to follow through on the financial and all of that?
Yeah, and one of the reasons is, again, one of the reasons for version two is we are not going to be generating any real revenue off of this. You can't, you don't have sales tax on medical cannabis. We're not allowing recreational. We don't have a use tax in place. So that means that in order to have anything, we don't have a revenue source to pay for it. It has to be paid for with existing funds. So the thought process is rather than having that become a burden on the city and something extra that we have to pay for, is to let another jurisdiction basically bear that, bear that cost and bear that responsibility. That's how this has been developed and one, again, one of several different reasons that at least staff's recommendation would be number two.
I have a couple more. Is anybody else? Okay. So what is the advantage, or maybe you said that, but I'm, just to clarify, the local license, they pay a fee for a license. Be like a contractor, is that the idea? You pay for a license as a contract if you're going to do work, if you're going to do work in the city, is that some of the same thing?
Yeah, so as it stands, you would be required to get a business license. The beauty of that is it lets us know that you're in the community, that you're operating or at least that you plan to operate within the community. We want to know who's here. So that's, you'd have to get the business license. A business license is how much?
Like 40 bucks or something.
Up to 60 bucks.
Up, it could go as high as $60, $100. It could go as high as $100. So I don't want anyone to think that that's going to be some kind of moneymaker. What it really does is, again, just gives us the identification of who's in the community or who's trying to do business in the community. When I say business, again, it would be limited to medical.
And if we're, just one last question. The 8:00 AM to 8:00, the 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, is that any advantage or is that not of any value? That's the time in which, you know, they can deliver.
We didn't include in version two a delivery timeframe. You certainly could. Most of these, most jurisdictions have their own, I think, Sonora is 10 to 9. So most of the jurisdictions in version two that they would be coming from, they would be governed by, by the time restriction of those, of those cities. That's something if the council wanted to add, it would be an easy addition.
All right, thank you.
Any other question by council? No? Okay. We'll open it up to public comment.
We'll open it up to public comment. So, again, please be respectful at the podium with the accous, it's very difficult to hear, thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Bill Wilson. Although I'm not necessarily a resident of Angels Camp Local, that is our mailbox, we are Angels Camp. We've been fairly active at the county level. Sad to say, you folks have, are doing something, I'm not really sure what you're trying to do. You're going to allow medical delivery. We have three dispensaries in this county. I hope those three have the priority to your delivery system over anybody from outside of the county. It seems very weird that you would want somebody coming from outside of your county to deliver medical cannabis to patients in your city when you have three local businesses in this county that do pay taxes. The other thing is, whether Angels Camp or Calaveras County voted to have recreational marijuana in California, the state did. It seems ludicrous to me to try to make criminals out of people who want to do no more than enjoy the same thing that half of the people in this town probably do with a bottle of wine, a six-pack of beer, or a quart of Jack Daniels. Nightly, daily, I have seen people walk out and stumble out of bars in this county, get behind the wheel of a car. I was at the fair where there was open alcohol consumption with no cannabis allowed, because it's federally illegal. That's insane. You are trying to make criminals out of people who have been fighting for the last 50-plus years to end a prohibition. You are trying to create another prohibition by saying, "You can deliver cannabis in our city, but you can't take money for it." You have to have a credit card or a way to pay for that cannabis without having any monetary compensation. You're trying to record how much those sales are. If the state somehow in the next year finally gets its act together and creates a bank or credit union where people can actually bank that money, people will not be walking around with thirty, forty thousand dollars in tax money that they paid to the county at the tax window. Now, we're not growing cannabis commercially anymore because of an idiotic ban by three members of our Board of Supervisors in this county. We are only allowing a thousand illegal, unregulated cartel and corrupt people to grow marijuana unabated in this county. It is legal for each adult in this room to grow six plants on their property. You want to grow it inside, that's another ludicrous idea. You have to use electricity for lights, you have wiring which people are not competent to do. You have mold, mildew, and other nonsense, water leaks that are going to cause problems. You have people that are going to get electrical fires because of old wiring in these houses that are downtown and around here. You're going to have Chinese and other illegals come into this city, county, and they are going to make illegal grows in houses. As you've probably all heard, there were 12 of them already eradicated in this county with federal help. That's 12 out of a thousand to 2,000, who knows? They don't have the idea. They know they recorded with registered taxpayers money and registered growers money that there were a thousand illegal grows. When those three people came into office, they still know there's a thousand illegal grows out there today. Marijuana's not going away. Marijuana's been in Calaveras County, Angels Camp, Murphy's, San Andreas, Valley Springs for the last 35 to 40 years. It was grown illegally until 1996. In 1996, we had Prop 215, which said everyone could grow six plants for their medical use. Now, you say you'll let them be delivered? Somebody will call up and say, "Hey, I want an eighth of this, two cookies, a brownie, and a couple of vape pens." That's probably about three or four hundred dollars. You're going to record that somehow, but you're not making any money. Angels Camp is not making a dime.
Time.
Thank you.
If I wasn't clear, I apologize. Can you, when you come up to comment, please limit it to three minutes. Sorry about that, I should have repeated that.
Good evening, Craig Witty, 568 Meawak. I'd like to thank all of you for all your due diligence on this topic. I have a couple of questions. I agree with you on the money issue. The state hasn't resolved an issue on how to handle all of this cash, and it's not forty thousand dollars. It's pallets of money that we're talking about. So, if you have to stick with a cash thing at this time, but I would think that as the banking industry changes, that we should go back and readdress that, so that we're not creating a crime with people carrying large amounts of cash with them. The major concern I have with your resolution of allowing other entities to control our business, for a long time, we had, it was called caregivers. And caregivers were supposed to be licensed and documented, and they could only have certain amount of things. There was no way to track what these other counties or cities did as licensed for caregivers. So, if we give up that control, take it away from our chief, I think we're going to have an issue of, people are going to come in here, we're not going to have a way to check on them. The officer on the road can't just call up Sonora at 10 o'clock at night and get a back, see if there's a background check on this guy doing the delivery. If we have it in-house, they can call to dispatch and get that information. So, I personally am opposed to granting outside entities our responsibility. Thank you.
Hi, Dan Fennell, 1260 Gold Cliff. I have been a resident here for 42 years, and I appreciate your courage on this matter. We moved here for a reason, and we don't want to change. We like it just the way it is. And on this, option one or option two, I'm interested in the chief's perspective, which option would he like, since he's the one that's going to have to administrate this? Do you have an opinion?
I stated early on that I was opposed to allowing deliveries, because it's almost unenforceable. There's really no way for us to be able to enforce it. So, if we're going to allow it, my preference would be that we control everything, as far as the background checks and everything internally. And that way, if we do come across somebody that is out of compliance, we will know right away. We won't have to rely on some third party to give us that information, so that would be my preference. Barring what I said previously, so.
In conclusion, I would like to support our chief.
Any other comment, public hearing? No?
Jack Lynch, 600 Selkirk, Ranch Road. In repealing the ordinance 480, I'd like to ask a question, maybe it's already understood, but what provisions have been made to cover the information that was in section number one of 480? Section number one took into account that there were going to be plants that individuals would be allowed to grow on their premises, and it gave good detailed guidance as to what those provisions have to be. And at this point in time, I don't see it being mentioned at all, and I just wonder whether that's something that's been forgotten. Can you comment on that, please?
I can guarantee you it has not been forgotten. We were trying to deal with it in order to-
That's sufficient, as long as you still have that to do, okay. Under existing city ordinances, there's a paragraph 17.78.032 of the ordinance that covers conditional use permits. And in that section, it specifically talks about medical marijuana dispensaries. And since you are wanting to eliminate that, I think you need to have some kind of a document before the council, just as you're repealing some things here, I think you need to be looking at that section to repeal the existing conditional use permit. And that's 17.78.032, paragraph, conditional use permits. You want to keep all the other stuff that's on conditional use permits, but dispensaries, I think you need to get rid of. I would favor, going on to another subject, I would favor version number one, because of what we've heard here, the importance of having the police review it and be in control of it. I feel gives the citizens a level of protection above what's proposed in the version number two. As a suggestion for consideration, somewhere along the line, a comment was made about, we already have three medical marijuana dispensaries in the county. Limiting it to three for delivery in the city, that would make sense. You don't have to have a whole bunch of reviews every year, et cetera. So, I'd be in favor of some kind of a limit, three sounds pretty good to me. And I would like the council to look seriously at an increase in the fines. Those fines seem very, very modest to me. I would be in favor of-
Time.
Okay. It seems as though the previous speaker went way beyond what I just did. But anyway, I'd propose doubling-
Time.
Doubling the fines. I hope everyone is under the same rules with respect to time.
And I apologize at the beginning that I did not clarify, but it was repeated again.
Mr. Lynch, I'd like you to know that I paused your timer when the city attorney was answering your questions.
Hi, Susan Morse, Angels Camp. I just wanted to also support the chief, and I believe that the law enforcement should handle the deliveries, the background checks, and so forth. So, I just wanted to give that, give my support. Thank you.
Given that there is no other public comment, we will close the public hearing.
My name is Kim Hughes, I'm at 556 Live Oak Drive. I agree with Mr. Wilson. We have three dispensaries, it should run through them. It seems ridiculous to have outside people come in. Now, today I witnessed a lot of stuff here in this town. And this town I have lived in my whole life, change happens. You're not going to stop it. I was at Mount Nearest when I was in eighth grade picking up garbage with marijuana. I just took care of somebody for a year that was dying. I have Dr. Levitt here, who was a physician to her. I would rather have her on marijuana than opiates, or meth, or any other drug. Marijuana does not kill people. Name one person, think, that's been killed by marijuana. You can't think, or started a fight. But alcohol, opiates, coke, and every other drug has. So, I think we need to pull this together as a community, because we are embarrassing. We have reached the level of, I don't know where we're living anymore. This is crazy. It's not going away. And I think that law enforcement should be involved in some way, shape, or form. But we need, as people, it's not going away. So, look at it medically, look at it, it's legal, people, that's what I'm saying. So, let's do it right in Angels Camp for once.
Okay, with that, if there is no other public comment, I will be closing the public hearing. At this point, we will bring it back to council for further discussion or questions.
Comment for clarity, given the chief's position. In version two, Doug, outside agencies regulating or vetting potential delivery people still requires them to be licensed here, right?
It does, and they would still have to go through the police chief, so it would just be an extra layer.
So, should our PD stop somebody in that process and determine that they're delivering, then they would have to produce a license?
Correct.
In the absence of a license, they're in violation. So, it's been, it's regulated to some degree through that process, correct?
Correct. The role of the PD would not significantly change in version one versus version two. They would still have to be permitted by them. It's just they would have already gone through a background check, and then the city would be able to determine how much more they want to do.
And the same would be true of, you chose to say Sonora, but the same would be true of county-regulated.
Correct, I only use Sonora because I'm more familiar with them.
But the three that are in the county, they go through the same process. If they're legally licensed and registered, they come to us, they get a business license.
Correct. As an example, Little Trees, my understanding is they have a local license, they have a state license, and they would be eligible to be put on the list. And then, you might have a little bit more, based off of the county's process, you might have a little bit more vetting of those, or more background requirements for them than you would have somebody else.
And then, one final point. On version two, am I correct that there is a, there is no non-cash requirement in version two?
Correct.
So, cash transactions are allowed under version two?
They are.
Okay.
But that's something that the council could change from the dais today, if you so choose. Again, it's just, the reason it's not there, at least from a staff perspective, was we want to give the incentive for people to comply with and operate within the parameters of the program. And what we do know is, as of right now, that there's delivery services delivering to Angels Camp, and they aren't complying with our existing thing. So, rather than doing more of the same, let's see if we can tweak it in such a way that maybe we can get people to comply with the program, so we know who's here and who's not.
Okay. No more from me.
Well, either of the ordinances allow us to potentially retrieve any revenue from Prop 64 from the state to enforce?
I don't believe so.
So, there'll be no, just to clarify, there will be no revenue to provide the city to enforce either version?
Under the ordinances that have been, both versions of the ordinances that have been proposed tonight, I believe that statement's correct.
So, then how are we going to afford this?
It will be a general fund obligation.
Interesting, okay. So, the follow-up to that, given that there is no dollars to enforce either one, do either, given the limited staffing, on top of the limited revenue that the city currently has, what is the, what- what is the, what, what version is best to not burden staff?
Well, it's staff recommendation for two. And it's for kind of the reasons that I outlined. I think that, to address some of the audience's concerns, I think that maybe there's a perception that the chief's role was significantly, or the police department's role was significantly different in version one versus version two. And other than the fact, I would actually say that version two is probably more restrictive, because there's additional layers and additional requirements.
That's a concern that I have, is I care more, because the unenforceability, I think if you have, by having the locals, the local dispensaries involved in this, they'll be more self-policing, or they'll be more, they'll have the incentive to turn in the people, the bad actors. And so that's an advantage in either version. You know, my only concern with version number two is that it limits supply. And my biggest concern is the personal liberties of the people who need this product for their medical benefit. I've seen it, I've seen what it does for people, and there is a medical need for this. A lot of them have, need different toxicities and different CDBs, whatever all that stuff is. And so I'd hate to have somebody who couldn't get their kid medications that help stop seizures because the three dispensaries in this area don't carry it. So I'd like people, the people that need it, to have access to it and be able to go anywhere they want with it. Hopefully, people shop local, but we shouldn't demand it, ever.
I would have a question. Would version two make it harder for deliveries, in what way? I'm not, I know Scott's got, you know, saying that, I'm just kind of curious.
Well, to the council-
Because that's important to know.
To the council members' comment, I think it does make it more difficult. I think that that's an accurate statement.
Because of the business license aspect of it?
No. Because you're inherently limiting the people who would be able to deliver. So when I had my original example, and I'm going to, sorry, and I'm going to admit that this is an extreme example, but I'm using it just for purposes of analogy. If somebody from LA wasn't, you might, they're very unlikely to be on the list, a dispensary that's in LA that allows delivery. So they would be prohibited from coming up here and providing medical cannabis. Whereas somebody who's closer, whether it's the three county dispensaries, or somebody in Sonora, or somebody else that maybe is close, those are the places that you'd likely draw from and likely approve if you felt like their vetting process was a good one. So it would be limited to those people who are kind of close, as opposed to essentially anyone who wanted to come in the state and then meet with the police chief and was approved to be put on the list. So I do think that you have a more inherent limitation. But that's to be offset by hopefully having those other jurisdictions. Since this isn't a revenue stream, you're limiting it with the idea that they're going to be doing more of the work, so that hopefully, we as a city don't have to.
And?
That's the policy reason, but either option, from staff's perspective, we can work with either option. That's not the problem. I mean, we can work with either option. It's just, there's reasons for different policy decisions. And I want everyone to be able to understand the policy debate that goes into different recommendations.
So is it accurate to say the biggest difference between the two versions is personal liberties? Is the ability to get whatever you need versus get whatever is approved, be offered? I mean, it seems like if I need to go to LA to get what's necessary for my kid, or for my parents, or grandparents, whatever the case is, I should be able to go to LA and not become a criminal.
So this doesn't, again, and this is an important distinction for everybody, because I think one of the important things I want everybody to take away from tonight, I can't regulate, or help you as a city regulate, consumption within the city. I can only help you regulate the acquisition or purchase of marijuana, in a recreational form or in a medical form. So I can't prevent, well, we can regulate like parks and what's allowed to be done in parks, just like we do smoking. But I can't prevent somebody from going to LA and bringing cannabis back to Angels Camp and then consuming it, cannabis, in their home. I have absolutely zero legal basis to be able to do that within the state of California. I can't do it. All we can do is basically say whether or not you're allowed to acquire it or purchase it within the city limits. Once we're outside the city limits, if somebody goes to Jamestown, or goes someplace else just outside the city limits where it's allowed, I have no ability to regulate that. And that's an important thing for the community to understand, because there's a limit on what we can legally do.
What about LA? If LA, if that dispensary would get a business license here in Angels Camp and set up what's necessary, then that, then it can, any dispensary anywhere in the United States, basically, or-
No, in the state of California.
Only California. Okay, any dispens-
That's an important distinction.
Any dispensary in the state of California could register with us and have a business license. Is that right? So that would be an option.
So let me, let's use this LA, this generic LA dispensary as an example. Under option one, the LA dispensary that has delivery could go to the police chief and go through a background and registration process. And they could then, if they were approved, be able to deliver legally within Angels Camp, medical cannabis, not recreational, but medical cannabis. That same dispensary, under option two, would have to ask to be put on an approved list by the city administrator first. And only if they were allowed to be put on that list by the city administrator, would they be allowed to then go to the police chief to basically see if there's any additional background work that needs to be completed. So there would be two steps instead of one.
May I ask about version one? Is there no business license required, or is, and I didn't see it in there, is it just expected?
It's expected that we do business-
But not written out?
Yeah.
Okay, I wondered about that.
What would, what would prevent the city administrator from putting them on an approved list? I understand it's another step, but is it just a formality? Or is there something where the city administrator is going to have to look into something, spend time, effort, money? I don't, I don't know.
I don't see, I don't see the need, I don't see the need to add bureaucracy and add more steps to the system. We've already got stringent licensing and regulation rules, we've already got Angels PD involved. I don't think we need to get the city administrator involved as well. So I'd like to, if you feel, if you're ready, I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and we adopt this ordinance four eighty-three with version number one, and we make sure that we, we appeal, or repeal ordinance four eighty, and also repeal chapter eight point two five, the medical cannabis regulations from Title Eight of the Angels Camp Municipal Code. And there's a good point, also make sure it's not in the ordinance that, for the use permits. And so if that makes sense somewhere, I'd like to move what I just said.
As a point of clarification to your motion, because you're prohibiting it, and as part of this action, there would not be a medical dispensary that would be allowed.
There would not be a medical dispensary allowed, that's correct.
So are you including everything that's already in the original?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not making any changes to the ordinance.
Same ordinance is here.
I just want, yeah, I just prefer version one, because it protects the citizens of Angels Camp, protects the personal liberties, and has no different, no effect on revenues. And compared to version two, it's less bureaucracy and less activity that we need to spend getting this done.
I have a follow-
It's understood that version one requires the license, too?
Yes, but if you want to, if you want to explicitly include that, so that we take the language of version two and stick it in version one explicitly requiring the license, that would be acceptable. I was just asking that the maker of the motion include that.
I'll accept that amendment.
And?
I have a follow-up question. Given your comment about revenue to enforce, what is going to be the impact to the general fund? If we, with either version going forward to enforce this and provide these dollars, if there are violations to, for litigation, or even the police department to man any staff hours through this process?
So other than the hundred dollars for the business license, there is not a funding source, so it would be general fund obligation?
There could be fines.
There could be fines.
There could be fines. And there would be fines, I would think, for someone operating illegally in the city.
But, yeah. So we would have to speculate on that aspect of it. The only thing that we can say concretely is they, is up to a hundred dollars in business license revenue, per entity, per year.
Okay, Scott, I had a couple of other questions before we get a second, or do you want to get a second on it? What do you want to do?
I have no control of getting seconds. I made the motion, I have no control of getting a second.
I just, you know, because it's, you're saying, you're saying what we have with version one, I just, but I wanted to ask something that was kind of, that had come up, that Jack Lynch brought up about the growing of six plants. It's not in this, how is that covered? Because we did have some regulations on that originally.
We do have some regulations. We have to go back and we have to change those regulations, because to be consistent with the law, you have to allow six plants unless you have a medical recommendation for a greater amount. If you have a greater, if you have a greater amount, you have to be able to demonstrate that you, the place in which they're going to be growing doesn't create a public health and safety disaster. But that's a future item.
That's a future item. Oh, two, okay.
We just didn't want all this to get confused.
Okay. All right. And then I also just wondered about the conditional use permit. I know sometimes we have that problem of removing things from our, that we need to remove from codes. So is that a problem? Something we could do now, or should we, the seventeen point seven eight point zero three two?
That part has to go through the planning commission.
Oh.
And you don't want, you don't want to do that before you take this initial action. So it's a, what I would call a two-stepper. So you put in place the permanent ban, then because it's part of, within the planning commission's jurisdiction, we take the removal, the use is disallowed. You just have a permitting process for something that's not allowed. So then you go back through the planning commission, and it comes to council.
So that will not be part of this motion, then? Is that what I'm hearing? You say we need to remove that amendment to the motion to, oh, no, that was a different, that was-
That was, that was a business license.
All right, so this motion does not include the use permit?
It does not. But to be very clear-
That's a separate issue.
To be very clear, so that there's no confusion, this, this action would prohibit a medical dispensary. There's an area where a use is, what the process would be for the use to be allowed, there's a process procedure that we have to go through and remove. You have to put in place a permanent ban before you go and remove a permit off the books. You can't, I, I'm not allowed to legally decide kind of for you, before you make your action. So then that, and that is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. So that will go before the planning commission, and then it will come before the council. So, but the idea, but this would effectively eliminate the ability to have a medical dispensary in Angels Camp.
Okay, so my motion, then, the only amendment, it would be consistent with the agenda and adding version one, and the only amendment would be to specify a business license is required.
I'll second it.
We have a second.
I have one last comment before we go in for roll call for a vote. I just want to urge the council and the community to really think about the consequences that we're about to vote on. We owe it to ourselves to think outside the box in terms of revenue. The city is in a dire situation. We have no revenue coming in to continue the level of services that we want to provide to this community. We're asking staff to burden them with more and more bureaucracy and regulation. And I think we really need to talk about what the outside ideas are and get more involved in how we can take advantage of this. We will not be getting any Prop sixty-four money. We're disallowing ourselves to take advantage of that, which could really help with our community. And I want to, once again, just urge that as we continue to have this debate and this vote, that we understand the consequences that we are setting ourselves up. We did it to ourselves before with redevelopment, and look at where we're at now. We have no revenue. And I really don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot by just, by using the separate, the personal and moral feelings that we have to not be able to be proactive and get ahead of the game, because of fear of where the train's leaving. The legislation is going to be going back into session, and the more that we can capture what we can to keep locally, otherwise, we will be relying on the state, and we won't have any revenue coming into this community. I know that this community, when it has hard times, comes together, so howl or high water, I really hope that when this council has hard decisions to make coming forward with our revenue and level of services, that we see the energy that you guys have tonight to come and help us. Because this is a revenue that we are saying, no, we do not want. So, once again, I just really urge council and the community to really think about the consequences that we're setting ourselves up for the future. If we want to start with roll call, and I will start at my left, for the vote.
If I could say something just before the, is that okay? Before we head to vote. I understand what Amanda's saying, and I know she has a true desire, and I agree with you, that it is very important, you know, for us to have revenue. I think that is where I do encourage the sales tax, that you would speak to your friends, and we do have a need in this community, and so I would really implore you to support the sales tax, because that can be the answer to that. The other thing is, the reason that I have been so, I've expressed before my dislike of having marijuana especially legalized in a community. I was in a situation back in San Francisco in the sixty-seven, sixty, I was there in sixty-six, sixty-seven, and everything was, you know, it all seemed very harmless at the time, in sixty-six. But by sixty-seven, there was, the Bank of America was, you know, rocks were thrown, bank left the area, what would seem to be a utopia, because everything was free in the Haight-Ashbury. You had free meals, you had free clothes. If somebody didn't have a place to live, you said, come on and live with us. It was communism or socialism ultimate, with the drug element and the free love element. The mafia came in, China, you know, you have the Chinese cartels, right? It was because it was, it was, it was because of what happened in the county and them legalizing that you ended up with that. You had pimps coming up and taking these little girls who were running away and pimping them. Okay? What was very light became very dark. Drugs come as an angel of light, but in the end, every family is hurt by them. No one family has anyone that has not been hurt in some way. So that is why, so you understand, my experience has shown me that it's really best to protect the community, and we should stay the course, always.
So roll call, starting with my left.
Councilmember Herman?
Aye.
Sorry. I meant Vice Mayor Herman, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Councilmember Olivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Beehill?
Aye.
Mayor Follendorf?
Nay. Four one.
Four one.
Agenda item eight, council report. I'll start at my left.
I attended the ECHA mixer that was held at the museum and featured information from the Mark Twain Hospital in regards to their, the history of their facilities, and also attended the, I guess, event of the permit being pulled over at the City Hall for the moving of dirt where the clinic should be.
Oh, I'm next. Bet I had to be called upon. Okay. I have nothing to report.
I have a couple of things. First, the competition against Supervisor Torfennelli, myself as well- First, the competition against Supervisor Torfennelli, myself, as well as fire chief and the sheriff for frog jumping during the fair. So, that was fun, if you were there. I did win, if there's been any question about that. For LAFCO, LAFCO has a couple of things coming up. Right now, we're waiting for a response from Murphy's Utility Districts. There's a potential annexation that they are looking at, and they're just waiting for the paperwork to be submitted. It's the same one that we talked about at Utica Water and Power. And then, we don't have staff report this agenda, and I just wanted to recognize all the work that the staff has done over the last month, to really get things going for the fair, and getting downtown ready. And I know that we have a lot of missing places at city hall and across different departments, and I know a lot of the staff is stepping up, and I just, it is recognized, and thank you for doing that. And that's all I have.
One item, I attended UWPA on the 22nd. The principal piece of business that was critical that night was the passing of the budget for 1819. Suffice it to say that the issues there are the same as they are in a lot of places. The reserves, because of the drought years, were significantly diminished, and there'll probably be, you know, a need for the members of that group to come together and see if there's a way to, you know, mitigate that. So, look to Melissa to kind of get with Mike, and set something in motion for some discussions in that regard. That's all I've got.
I have no report.
Okay. Calendar?
Okay. Tomorrow, on June 6th, 5:30 is the COG meeting in the Board of Supervisors chambers, and after that, at 6:30, Calaveras Transit Board meets. The budget workshop that was previously scheduled for the 7th has been canceled. June 14th, at 6:00 PM, is Planning Commission meeting at the Firehouse. June 18th, 3:45 is Solid Waste Committee meeting, and we're back for City Council in the High School Theater on the 19th.
Did you have something? Okay. We are drawn.